Please stand for.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call him please. Kelsey, Mr. Randy?
Present.
Present. Kelsey Moncrief?
Present.
Kelsey Taylor?
Present.
Kelsey Patstrander?
Present.
Kelsey Mazzola?
Present.
And President Cameron?
Present.
That's all, sir. Okay, uh, welcome in.
Good evening.
Tell us about RL one nine dash eight four, please.
We're here to ask that you approve a budget transfer in the capital budget. This is the payroll drainage on the terminal pump station relooking project that was completed late last season and unapproved in two thousand and ten and is ready to be paid out. And for whatever reason, the people might not have the necessary funding to pay out the drainage, so we need the sixteen thousand four hundred two dollars twenty cents to move from capital contingency to the caper roof repair. And that's our request.
Questions or comments? Yes, Kelsey Lucy.
I had, uh, heard that there, that the control room roof has a, has a leak in it as well. Is this the control room or is this the terminal pump station?
This is the terminal pump station. The H Street is not a control room, so.
Okay, but, and, and the control room has a leak in its roof as well?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of?
But, you know, that hasn't been given a final acceptance by the city that I'm aware of, so it's still a contractor's responsibility.
Okay.
Control room is part of the new construction. In the end.
Other questions or comments?
Thank you, Ed.
Thanks, Ed.
Captain Rob?
Thank you.
Jared, just, or Chuck, do you speak for Juliette or?
No, no.
Okay.
I'm aware of you, so.
All right.
I'm sure Claire, please. I've said we have, um, um, special.
You should vote me now.
Megan's here.
Megan's here. Megan, you ready?
Sure, I'm ready.
All right, good.
I'll be ready. Okay, I have two, um, I think the first one is the sale of sixteen second street. Um, Mr. Cyrus. Uh, this, he owns the house across the street, so it's not technically a side lot, but same concept, um, he said he's been maintaining this, this lot for a while and he's looking to use it, he's gonna keep it green space because there's an existing driveway that he wants to continue to use for parking.
Questions or comments?
Were there any other proposals for the lot or do you have a proposal there?
He's the only one that, that I'm aware of, um, this was, uh, demolished the house here, we sent, so we sent a lot of letters out to each, the neighbors on each side of the property, no one got back to us, um, and then, it was probably about a year ago, um, and then Mr. Cyrus with his, uh, aptitude.
Does he have plans to, to pay for the property or?
No, he's gonna keep the green space, um, the drive that's on, the driver that's on the left-hand side of the property when you're facing it, um, so that he says what he's occasionally, um, mainly living in the one where the cars haven't come off the streets.
He talked to me about it three years ago, like, get property.
No maintenance, no sale. He's been maintaining it for years.
Oh, okay.
You see, we are these lots when we sell, they go for two hundred fifty, two hundred and five hundred dollars. I think twenty-five hundred dollars, is that the reason why they pay so much for it?
Yeah, we talked about that, so when we sent out the side lot program letters, um, I worked with Scott Snyder to get the fair market value, and that's based on those, they must be merged with the, yeah, with his property, but since this is across the street.
This is gonna continue to be a separate, potentially building lot. We don't want to be sure if it is, it's still a separate lot, not merged.
So technically, he's owning two property lots.
Right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, of course, yeah.
Questions or comments on this? I know, RL one nine dash eight five.
Okay, this is, um, the One Street Park Mosaic, um, back in March, Safe Streets received a one thousand dollar grant from the Flint County Arts Council, um, and that was to repair the mosaic that Emily Dablon's, um, studio did at the park, um, on one of the walls there. So, this, um, this is just a resolution for a donation of, uh, Emily's services to the park, and then, um, she's also requesting that TV will pay for uses of water.
Questions or comments?
How much is the, uh, the grant for?
The grant?
Thousand dollars.
Yeah, a thousand dollars. Safe Streets just recently became a nonprofit, so this is the first grant they were able to receive.
Questions or comments? Thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Ray, you ready?
Yeah, I'm ready.
All right. Get three of, tell us about RL one nine dash eight nine, please.
This is, uh, an agreement with the D O P for, uh, engineering services for the preliminary design and, uh, renovation else for, uh, upgrading the signal and, uh, Washington Street and all.
Questions or comments on this? See none, all right, why don't you tell us about one nine dash nine zero, please, Ray.
This one is, uh, I applied a year ago for, uh, some pedestrian safety improvements at various locations in the city, and, uh, we were awarded the grant, so this is the agreement with the D O P for, uh, preliminary design.
Okay, questions or comments? Kelsey Lucy.
Ray, uh, since I'm the new guy, I'm not familiar with these particular improvements, but I'm curious, because a couple of them look like they're in the district that I represent. I'm curious about Riverside Drive at Chestnut, um, it's a little bit out of my district, but it's pretty close, uh, Highland Ave at Neeland Ave and West Middle at Neeland Ave.
The, uh.
If you can recall.
Yeah, I know.
Oh, cool.
I'll just go down through the list.
Oh, sure.
First we, is to remove the signal that's there in the Robinson, and put in a raised crosswalk with a rapid flash beacon. Uh, Midblock Mitchell and Midblock Park are to do, uh, raised crossing, uh, park with, uh, rapid flash beacons for, uh, crossing Midblock near the hospital. Um, Western Street, this is near, uh, St. Mike's where, um, there'll be a, uh, raised signal there, a raised crosswalk there, just to make it safer for people. Um, Riverside Drive, Chestnut, this is to put a crossing in that's not there now with handicap ramps and, uh, strapping on the street. Um, the, uh, Highland and West Middle, those are all around the West Middle School, there for strapping and, uh, handicap ramps and signage, because it's a school area. Prospect, that's the same thing, that's near the school, that's the crossing in East Harbor, that's near the school, crossing in, um, West Alaba Rush, that's to do for the crossing in.
What, what do you mean by crossing then?
Handicap ramps, signage, strapping in the street. And some often with rushback. And Liberty Street, that's to put a raised crossing in, uh, there's issues with the crossing street, so, these are all our, um, locations that I looked at and, um, there was issues with the classroom schools, the hospital, um, other, other areas where there's been traffic.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Ray, thank you, um, when you say raised crosswalk, um.
It's like on the South Side, but it's.
It's like Conklin Avenue and South.
Just like Conklin. How does that impact traffic flow in terms of view? Okay.
Slows down, maybe it's safe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And those lights do, they do work better together, right?
And it, but it's not more like speed and speed bump.
No.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You're gonna take that one over there at like twenty-five miles an hour and then, no, I've done it at thirty, and it doesn't, it lifts you up your seat a little bit. No.
If you're doing fifty, like, you're.
Thirty-five, yes, thirty-five, forty, then you.
Exactly, you're not.
Yeah, maybe you better slow down.
Chris, let's tell all the states now.
You do it with twenty-five, three miles an hour.
South Washington's.
No, no, no. Well, if you don't see it coming, I mean, if you don't see it coming, and you're doing twenty-five, three miles an hour, you're gonna be okay. If you're doing thirty-five, you're gonna feel it.
That's a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit through there anyway.
Yeah.
That's a part of the. Right, correct, so you gotta slow down, Councilman Patstrander.
I'm not talking about it. And rapid flat, rapid flash beacons are, uh, they'll be similar to what on Main Street by U B High Street, as an example, if you want. They're gonna flash, we should allow them to cross.
There's one on Riverside Drive too like that, isn't there?
There's going to be one, the, okay, that's.
There's one on Conklin Avenue. Oh, that, that's in the.
That's the one that they were asking for, it's on.
It's, uh, Washington, not really.
Okay.
Another thing we want to address, I don't know, you have confidence of watching, really what you're looking at.
Questions or comments?
Ray, do we have a timetable on that? I know these are designed, I know this is preliminary, but.
Right, and hopefully, the designs should not take long, um.
Yeah.
I have to go out and get, uh, another queue for engineering services, I can't do that, left it just assigned.
Got him.
The big board is in place, then I can, I can advertise and get consultant on board and come along through the D O P process, so.
Well, I know this has been a long time coming, I know you put a lot of work into this, Ray, so thank you very much.
Is this, is this, uh, city money or is this, uh?
No, it's a grant, this is a grant.
Hundred percent grant.
Yeah.
When you borrow money, you're, then we pay the man who did it. So, the one thing that, you know, tends to, to bigger problems is, uh, you know, whether it be the brown bill or this kind of situation, is, is the maintenance after it's stopped, I know it's the immediate, uh, works of the grants, and then we need to maintain this stuff, it's like.
Light bike, isn't it?
And, uh, I'd just like to see things maintained.
Yeah, this is a light bike, I thought.
We should take that piece off.
Just through the years, it seems like some of the things that we, what this is, the maintenance isn't there after.
It's what's vibrating.
And I just hope that, uh, the lights and, uh, raised ramps and all that, that, uh, when we start deteriorating, when we start deteriorating, we're thinking we can tear apart.
Ray, before you go, could you give us a brief update on progress with the contractor on Front Street?
I think we need to go to executive session.
We do?
Well, if they were, I discussed, I was gonna ask them about the after, some of the other stuff to ask, do they have?
Break a motion, wanna go to executive session?
We have to do the funds for the football.
We must ask for, uh, what'd you ask?
I just asked for progress of the contractor on Front Street, it's not executive session.
I mean, unless we're talking about transportation.
I'm not, I wasn't gonna ask that, I just asked for the progress.
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, I mean, you can give you a general.
That's all I'm looking for, that's all I'm looking for.
They are, uh, supposed to, uh, start the paving that up within that they removed, you know, they only had part of it done over the winters, they, they last that long.
Yeah, I'm confident.
Yep, they were supposed to start paving that, they, um, didn't get to talk to Abby, my respect, who's on that job, see what probably got, but, they are moving right along, they're, they know that they have until June twenty-first, and if they, if they work after June twenty-first, there's penalties every day.
Okay.
So, they're, they can't get out of the penalty, they agreed, they agreed to that, and, uh, their projection was that they would finish sometime in August, they have now said that they think they can hear for twenty-fourth, so.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Did you have any?
We have one more.
Obviously, they're gonna try hard not to, uh, uh, the twenty-second.
Sure, sure, absolutely, yeah.
Twenty-second, they're gonna get a penalty.
Okay, thank you.
Are you gonna, yeah.
I have one.
Mr. President? Yes.
Ha, are you just asking for a general update, or did you, did you hear something?
No, I just asked for general, that's all, that's all I wanted, thank you, Ray.
Yeah?
All right, I know, RL one nine dash nine six, please, Ray.
Yes, this is to, uh, transfer funds for, um, a, do flood wall maintenance inspection and, uh, some repairs. Thirty-five years, the city is mandated to, uh, tools for the E V inspect all the pipes and conduits that run through, uh, the flood walls and, uh, was last done in twenty fourteen, which means this year it has to be done. Unfortunately, I wasn't aware that it had to be done, which is why it wasn't in the budget, so that's why we have to finish.
Chuck, are we gonna be okay in the health insurance line there?
Yeah, they're, uh, getting, uh, the last itself, we've got eighty-four, probably over sixty-five home insurance, but it saves a hundred fifty thousand dollars, but that is taken right now.
Questions or comments?
Just so you know, there's twenty-five of them, if you have to be, it's.
How long does it take for them to inspect it, any idea?
They can do, they can do maybe up to five a day, they, up to a consultant to give everybody on the clock, they probably can buy a day depending on the difficulty, if they have to buy a gas pump or, if there's a storm sewer, then generally there's nothing in there unless it's raining, if there's a, if there's a sewer, then they might have to buy a gas pump in order to inspect it, so.
Okay.
Don't forget after they inspect it, they tie costs, you have to fix.
I understand that, yeah, understood. Other questions or comments? One more comment, you're an engineer, can you engineer that so it doesn't rattle?
We gotta watch something there.
Yeah, there you go, you sure do.
It gotta be a fan, right above it.
Yep, there sure is. All right, thank you, Ray, thank you. Did I say Steve walking? Yep, Steve's here. Hi, Steve.
Hi.
Tell us about RL one nine dash nine four, please.
Okay, so, basically, um, Steve went retired in March, um, so his position of full funding, um, and funded, I can't remember exactly how many, this month, I'm here, um, I have to, um, um. And so, uh, since it is, okay, that's, right there, good.
And you could.
That plus the vibrations and, yeah.
Uh, so. Uh, with my department, uh, I evaluated and determined, I do not think we would need to hire any housing supervisors, but what we would, that would be extremely useful right now is, uh, someone to sort of take up the old housing casework, uh, files, so we, um, we took Sue, it's retired June last year, she was the housing caseworker, basically took her job description, updated it, uh, made a little add here, and, uh, added some, uh, more stuff into it to basically create new position housing specialist, so, uh, I'd like to hire a housing specialist, basically handle all of our housing stuff right now.
How much did it pay before you hired?
Uh, I can't remember what Sue's old salary was, this position would give him more than what Sue was doing, so.
You're making it snazzier.
I was saying, yeah.
Sorry, you said you're making it snazzier.
Yeah, adding a new, uh, additional job description, uh, into, uh, that, adding new jobs, new tasks, so to speak, uh, round out.
But we're also losing what happened replacing the supervisor.
Yeah.
So we're really taking a few divisions, giving, uh, more, we're using.
It's a net gain in the end. Salary.
So this person's getting paid more, probably, is that about?
Right, we're just saying it's slightly more.
Oh, is that what?
We think it's not a huge increase. So, I think it's a little bit.
Are we within other areas as far as?
Everything in Bentley to this.
What I'm asking, as far as pay goes there, like others, say, if they go court.
Oh, I am not.
Pay scale, I'm just curious.
I am not in areas that are, that are, I do all of that.
No, that's fine, I was just curious if we're, if we're in the right range to hire somebody, I mean, people interested in looking into it.
I do know it's a top job, it's a top job market for hiring, yes.
Oh, I'm sure it is. Other questions or comments? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Steve. Ken, you wanna go to your stuff next?
Sure, let's see, the first one, so the one and two assistant attorney positions has been vacant, uh, currently all this year, I mean, as a result, the secretary of the court council has picked up the administrative duties, the workers compensation, that's, you know, completing filing reforms, et cetera, there's still an attorney who has to provide some oversight, hopefully when we get another assistant attorney, they'll start doing some more of that work as well, but right now, the secretary of the court council has picked up that additional work, uh, rather than, since we didn't know how long it would be, I didn't come in in January and say that, hey, this is a person working out of title, this is not the union, I waited until it gone on for at least, at least half a year, so I thought with twenty-five hundred dollar, one year responsibility, just, and it's coming out of the assistant attorney, which should have at the end of the year, we calculated that probably, uh, at least ten thousand dollars in that line left, we haven't hired somebody part-time, assuming we hire somebody full-time for the rest of the year, starting in January.
Ultimately coming out of the same pool anyway, so, yeah.
It's just that this person's doing their jobs and taking the money out of.
Absolutely, no, that's. Questions or comments?
Thank you.
All right, Ken.
The second one, uh, for everybody with certain counsel in Livingston, you may recall, we discussed the story of the budget process, and I gave you a copy, uh, there's a disparity between these jobs, uh, I know why it happened between two thousand two and two thousand six, there was a freeze on all these salaries, most of them have been corrected over time, we talked about correcting this as part of the four nineteen budget, if there weren't any conditional funds available after we went through the budget, uh, again, we had a vacancy in this position for a few months, right, so that now has given us the funds for this year to be able to pay it without having to transfer it anywhere else, and then in next year's budget, it will pick up at that amount, so this is just bringing that position up to the, the next lowest paid person in city hall.
Questions or comments? I think we got one more, Ray.
Oh, this is, uh, Pilot.
Nineteen, page nineteen.
Nineteen dash eight eight, thirty-four Harley.
Thirty-four Harley, you have any other questions about?
Yeah. Want me to bring that back?
It's Howard's Justice State Office.
Yeah, he might be interested in this one. We'll just wait for you, we're waiting for you. Yeah, don't worry about it, thank you for your paperwork, he's gonna sign it because of you. Thank you, Ty, here.
So, because in nineteen sixty-nine, Kelsey Patstrander served his first term, uh, the city, the county, and the state created this government set, right, and, and they executed a contract agreement at that time, which has been a minute over time, but one of the provisions was the city and bureau, bureau actually owned the original, uh, collection of properties, and then it was conveyed to the cities, and then the city was to convey the properties to the county and to the state when the bonded, when the construction costs for those were complete, that probably happened twenty years ago, we conveyed the county's property to the county, if you go on and look on G I S or if you look on parcel, you know, Matt, everything says it's owned by the state, but nobody can locate deed that says it was actually transferred from the city to the state, I have been working with them on and off on this since two thousand and thirteen, and I'm finally convinced that there is nothing in the record that shows that the city ever conveyed the property to them, uh, in two thousand thirteen, bureau signed off on the fact that they complied with the conditions of the transfer, which is that they built the building, the bureau was only signing it to them, they built the building, which of course happened in, like, the early seventies, so, so this is something that I've been discussing with the state attorneys for a number of years, the particular reason it's coming up now is that sometime in very near future, I'm not sure what their schedule is, but they're going to be doing a cleaning of the entire exterior of the building, and as owner of the property, we are potentially liable for anything that happens to those people, including the exterior of the building, so I'd very much like to make sure I cleaned up title, that the state is clearly the owner, uh, and again, transfer is required by agreement that goes back.
Forty, fifty years ago, anyway, yeah.
They've never paid us rent for the property.
Normally required to a new agreement.
Yeah. That makes sense.
What would happen if we located a twenty-year-old deed after, after producing a new one?
Wouldn't matter.
Wouldn't matter.
I mean, it's not, it's not recorded.
Right.
So the fact that we may have given them a deed and never got recorded, they want to record, the funny part is, like I said, if you look anywhere, it says that they own the building.
Right.
Like, every real property record says that they own the building, you just can't find a deed that's recorded, et cetera, and the state just wants to clean it up, and since they do work on that, I'm happy to do it.
Better get it on paper, get it over and done with.
Questions or comments?
Thank you, Ken.
Go ahead, Ken.
He always cleans things up so well, I can't.
You get a clean shot of things, huh?
Yeah.
Jared, it's around to you now.
Can you, uh, yes, I was just checking, yeah, C D A, uh, so, uh, RL, which was, uh, nineteen dash nine one. Just to give us some background, uh, the planner position was, uh, I think Phil and, and, uh, being moved by a guy named Tim Canaccia, who, who supported the planning commission, he's taken a job, uh, off the work in a student county, um, and so, looking at the job and advertising it, posting it, which is right now, it, from a, a header standpoint, from contracting, uh, college graduates, graduates, folks interested in the job, uh, to the who we look at, cities, connected to the, uh, that type of thing, but more and more county planning positions we're competing against, in case of the former employee was there, as well as, uh, we look at Monroe County, which has, you know, higher salary, so, uh, we're looking to increase the planner position, which is currently vacant, uh, by roughly twelve hundred dollars, in addition to the, uh, change in salary, we're also adding a job requirement and duty to support the traffic board, um, the traffic board has never been supported by a planner, I mean, I've been on it for, for, more and more traffic issues are relating not to speed limits and stop signs, but, uh, for referrals from C D A or planning commission regarding curb cuts or appropriateness as it relates to traffic flow, so, uh, we feel it's necessary for the traffic board to have support from someone in the planning department, and also update the manner in which it operates from a, uh, standpoint of, uh, cases, whether you vote or not, as well as just general, uh, types of discussion, it's a unique board in that sense, but, uh, the target planning department feels it's a good way to continue to, uh, on the game, with a lot of experienced people from the M T S, uh, the M T S and B T D, but, uh, no one kind of overseeing the entire operation, making sure that cases, uh, made it there and things are being referred exclusively from the C D A and planning commission, so that's the, that's the request.
What's great, thank you, Mr. President. Jared, um, so the component.
Jared, um, so the component, uh, uh, or the new proposed component, rather, of this position, um, as it relates to the traffic board, is it advisory only? Or is it in addition to the overall voting schematic structure of the traffic?
No, it would be a staff position that would support the traffic board, very much like staff positions support the ZDA.
Got it.
Or, um, planning.
Thank you, Jared.
Other questions or comments? All right, Jared, thanks. One night dash eight seven?
Oh, yeah. That, so we monitored last year in December, right, for Seven Molly Street, the mixed-use parking problem. And Pike Development, we see the pilots from the IDA, uh, and as we continue to play with the schedule. Uh, the schedule for the mixed-use project now has been pushed out two years. So we had it starting in twenty nineteen. Clearly the mixed use is gonna be done now, but the exact same schedule, but it's gonna start, the construction schedule, uh, will be pushed two years, so it'll be twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. So they get their permit in the same twenty-three years, same exact same as, uh, nothing's changed other than the construction schedule. Well, it primarily is being driven by the parking garage, because that needs to be done.
Pushed out one year.
Two years.
Two years.
Two years, because then I'll come back again. So this way we can have a proper.
So, but, th- this change obviously creates a scenario where the space between the completion and construction of the ramp and the beginning of the construction of the mixed-use property is longer, is that true? Because you, you have, you have pilot schedule that basically said that started in twenty nineteen, assuming that construction would start in twenty nineteen. For the mixed-use property.
For the mixed-use project.
Right.
And that's not going to happen.
But wasn't that assuming also that the parking ramp was gonna start construction in twenty nineteen as well?
Both of them, yes.
Right, so why is now, why are now the ramp and mixed-use product is not happening simultaneously as was set by the pilot?
Uh, probably the best answer is that Pike, we're getting the money through the ESD grant. That's currently able to fund a lot of the mixed-use project. And Pike wants to make sure that money is in hand before they actually start the mixed-use project. But then they get the money in hand through us building a parking garage, getting the ESD money back, so they have sufficient funds to fund the mixed-use project. So then they can start that.
Until the parking ramp.
Until the parking ramp is either finished or substantially.
Would you be again this year? Supposed to be the parking ramp, you're talking about the.
But it's not just that, it's also receiving the money back from ESD.
So then, uh, we're, our, our.
So then here to get it done.
From ESD?
How would that affect construction?
Just going to start.
But what if everything is set and ready to go?
Yeah.
In June of twenty twenty, does that mean that now you can't start, start on the mixed-use pro- property for another seven months?
No, 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 the pilot will change.
The pilot will change.
If everything were perfect, everything were perfect, it makes, uh, last quarter, next year. If everything were perfect, but this, this whole project is broken, it wouldn't have been that bad.
From here on in, it should be a little shorter, so we're gonna need this.
We're gonna go back to winning, winning the money back. But that's the key issue, when you get the money back.
Make some more finger.
And that we can't make that. It's theoretically. Kind of theoretically, uh, so I said, they could start at the end of twenty twenty. It's simple, but pilots always, you can start here.
Mm-hmm.
Nor if you say we start in twenty twenty-one. At most, within a few months, we've been working on the project, it will still be under Bureau.
And they asked me to try to take roughly what's in behind the ten points.
Yeah, and then we get, Michael C. of others, probably go over to the next year, and then it's maybe a month or so.
So is this, is this standard to have, uh, a contractor say that we're not, I mean, we work, we obviously work grant funding all the time, right? So is this standard to have contractors say, we're not gonna do anything until we have the money?
I was just looking at standards projects.
First of all, we're doing ESD since I, I, I. They've had some, they've been burned by ESD, I'm not just sure.
So what happens if we got from ESD? What happens if ESD doesn't go through with it?
ESD doesn't?
Yeah.
Then they won't build the mixed-use.
What do you mean they've been burned, they've been delayed by, getting money or not getting the money?
But then we would have a ramp in the other building.
Right, I mean, we're also, we're also.
We passed the first part.
I, I, I agree with Annie on this one, absolutely. I mean, i- if, if Pike is worried about not getting money from ESD, shouldn't we also be worried about not getting money from ESD?
Have we had enough conversation with them that I believe we're gonna need the money? Okay?
That doesn't sound good enough, to be honest.
What was their experience in Rochester?
Okay, so it's not okay, it's everything.
No, I mean, I agree.
I agree, not just okay.
Just so, just so we can move forward incrementally here, okay? Can we get some backstory on, on, first of all, what is the bottleneck with ESD? Let, let's start there. What's the bottleneck? What is taking so long? I don't care about Rochester, I don't care about anything else. Like, what is ESD? Are they waiting on something, are they, what's the delay?
Do you currently?
Currently, yes.
Yes, it isn't delaying, yes.
But they can't move forward till we give them and sign contractor, some documents we don't have yet.
Correct. Why do we not have that yet?
Well, well, one of the things is that we guarantee maximum price, so it needs to be addressed, uh, still negotiating, so.
Well.
Remember, this is, this contract, it's a lease and then purchased in five years, so we're pushing this out five years. We're writing agreements for five years from now.
I, I, I.
There are attachments to the contract.
Correct, I, I understand that, but you, you know, the problem is, is, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this round three with this? A- and, and, I mean, like, for us, yeah, for us, as, at least as it relates to us, but like, the more time dependency that's held here, the higher the cost.
I mean, with all due respect.
I, I mean, this is, this is ridiculous. I, I, I'm so, like, I'm, this is not directed at you, Chuck specifically, or, but like, I, I, I mean, I mean, the, the, the taxpayers are on the hook for this. What in the world, i- what is this delay?
Gio, what I would say is that this is a complex project, a means of which the city has not undertaken from a public-private perspective.
Sure.
Certainly in the last twenty years.
Sure.
Doing so, um, in a way that we're threatening a needle here with ESD money with the private developer and getting parking out of this. So when you're talking about legal frameworks, when you're talking about leases, when you're talking about pilots, there's a very prescribed method that Ken has to take to protect the city from a legal perspective. Chuck has to take to protect the city from a financial perspective, and that takes time. Um, I would, I would, I know that the mayor shares your and the rest of the city councils just, uh, wish that, you know, we can, uh, address parking downtown, we can get this built. Um, and it's pushing the process more than anyone. But, um, thi- this is a neat project within the Southern tier, I would say, if not, you know, the state of New York, the way that it's being structured. Between bureau, the city, and the private developer. And I don't think it's.
Any IDA.
Yeah.
IDA.
I, I would also, I would also say that in, in doing this, because the city has never done a project like this, maybe ever, maybe in the last twenty-five years. Um, there are things that come up that are unanticipated, there are things that come up that are anticipated. So it's, it's about working through that process, and there are times that come when we have to go to city council to amend things and get this done. Um, I don't think it's a problem, ESD, we're pushing as hard as we can. Um, you have a large development company in a large city that are trying to hammer this out, it takes time.
Patrick, to your point, I think ESD is the best support, plus. Okay, that's good. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
I don't feel comfortable with this.
I, I guess, what, something that, um, that is still in the forefront of my mind in this discussion too, uh, that, that doesn't, that is, you know, I, I can't let go of, is that back in December, when we were, you know, discussing this project, and, and there was, you know, a change to the pilot agreement. The city was gonna have to provide more money for this project directly at the general fund. And we had a long discussion as council about whether or not that's worth it, and whether or not that's warranted, and, and all these different things. And one of the main arguments that was provided by the mayor's office had to do with timeliness of the project. Had to do with steel tariffs and the tax plan, that if we don't do this right now, then we're gonna have to owe this more money and stuff like that. And you would think that when that argument and that timeliness of the end of the year is coming, is thrown at city council, that at that point, you know, we make that decision, we put faith in the mayor's office to make sure that that's, you know, that, that all that is true and all that is, is, is valid, and now we're gonna finally move forward with the project. And now we're sitting here in this scenario where all these other things are now coming up. That, uh, that you'd think when, when that argument is being made to us about timeliness, you know, that would, that would have all been taken care of at that point. It ju- it just seems to, to, to a council, and at this point, I can, of course, only speak for myself, it seems to, to me, uh, uh, that, um, you know, there are just things that we're being, you know, uh, we're just not being told about what's happening with, with this project step by step, and I, I'm a little bit confused as to where we are right now.
I think it's a never-changing, uh, kind of, things aren't always the same daily, day after day. My, I'm just happy to see that the, the parking ramp is gonna be built first. And, cause that's what we want as a city, that's what we want, that's what we need. And, and then they're gonna concentrate on the, uh, market rate housing.
When, when is construction supposed to start? Is the market, market? I know when it was supposed to start, but when's it gonna start now?
I don't know, David's gonna, clarify the answer, do they?
You know, regardless, regardless of how unique this project is, and regardless of how many quote-unquote hands are in the cookie jar, yes, it is true that, you know, there are exogenous factors that come up now and then that you can suspect. But for it to slow it down to this rate, like, I gotta be honest, this process does not sound very prescriptive. Right, because by definition, a prescriptive process allows you to be able to expect those exogenous things. I, I, I mean, I just, I don't, I mean, this is literally, this is literally round three. A- and, and I understand the unique, like, the, you know, ESD came down, you know, the, those grant, that, that, that level, forgive me, of grant funding normally goes down, you know, for the, um, uh, you know, for economic development projects that, you know, encompass the, the, the mixed-use facility, and we were able to get part of it for, for the parking garage. I, I think that's a dynamic, we've, we've already gone through that a number of times, i- it's just, wow.
I would say, and, and to compare it to something, Gio, that council didn't really have, because it did not necessitate by law, uh, an act of, it was a private development. It's a four thirty-five State Street project, which, all intents and purposes, was a four-year arc. In terms of getting property demolished and working with, you know, brownfield credits. Um, I will say that Ken and Chuck, I think, have, uh, definitely keep city council moved as much as possible. The last city council meeting, it was believed that we may have to have a special meeting, which was not the case. Try to give it, do as much information as possible, but, but, you know, with that four thirty-five State Street, uh, project, uh, a lot of contingencies, a lot of environmental issues, a lot of getting different rounds of grant funding that didn't necessarily come to city council for every step along the way. So you guys may not have seen all the machinations of that, but behind the scenes, that exact same type of thing is happening. It's complex, I wish it wasn't as much. I suppose that that's just working private, or excuse me, in the public sector, uh, happens. But, you know, in comparison, I'm not sure that this is way out of whack. It's just that city council has kind of had a front seat to every step along the process. And, uh, I wish it was going faster than certainly the mayor does as well. Again, Ken, I don't know if there's anybody who, who believes that more than the mayor, um, but this is kind of where we, this is where we sit, this is where, by pushing it as hard, it is still where it ends up. Uh, I think that if it was a beginning and an end, and it was a three-year process, that would be one thing, but having these baby steps throughout the way and trying to get the council to pass them as we approach them to, to save time, it, it gives you an idea of everything that needs to be done for this project.
Other questions or comments?
We have one other, uh, question screen. Do we expect anything else? Of, let me rephrase, do we expect anything else of this magnitude going forward?
Gio, I'm gonna answer that with one possibility, environmental stuff.
I thought there was a lot.
Yeah, what more, what specifically?
You know, if they go out there and they find oil tanks, you know where it's gonna be.
We didn't do the archeological.
Right, yeah, that was the one that Bington University did, yeah.
What's, I'm sorry, Ken, I'm sorry, Ken. That should be done, that should be done, you know, later than the end of this one.
How come it hasn't been done yet?
I can't answer that. I don't think, yeah, I don't even answer that.
Right.
Yeah.
Something on the city's end wasn't done, or is it something ex- external to?
I think they'll give you a different, you know, title, right? But title issues were probably resolved. Now they wanna get a title report insurance before they sign the contract. It's a, a Pike agency, Pike. And so those are the sorts of things that, you know, I think.
Every time we think we gotta sign you, there's something.
Yeah, sometimes it's that, and sometimes I see something and I say, no, we can't do this this way. It is, it's, it's, it's a unique deal.
So I was under the impression that, that these two projects, the, the parking ramp project and the mixed-use project were, were, were one project, right? That, that, that's sort of the appeal of the entire thing, right? That it, that is, that it's one multifaceted, multifaceted project for the sake of downtown development. In fact, probably the appeal to ESD, I mean, the mixed-use is the big appeal there too. So, so that's always how, I mean, I, 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 I could go back to the RFQ and look at what that looks like. I'm sure that the original RFQ is very much two projects in one, this is, this is one project. So at what point, what was the first time that we heard from Pike all of a sudden that this is no longer one project? And that they weren't even gonna consider moving forward with part two, what they call part two, or what we call part two of the project, which is the mixed-use development, until they have fronts of ESD, because that, that's.
It's still a, it's still a one-phase project, it's still, uh, uh, parking, parking lot and multi-use, or, um, uh, market rate, market rate housing. It's still one project, it's just that the finance, and they wanted to be in a certain area for them to continue with phase two.
It doesn't seem like that for us, because it sounds like we could, we could, you know, build this parking ramp on the city's dime. Then, you know, years later, then who knows what has changed between when we got this to now to years later, and ESD says, listen, you know, we don't, back to the original thing, you know, we don't fund economic development projects that are just parking ramps, and the, we don't see the mixed uses that, uh, that, that vital to the future of downtown Bington, they don't give us the money. You know, I mean, it's.
Well, now you're making their argument.
Well, no, exactly.
So ESD already is aware of everything that's going on.
Correct. So. Just, just to clarify, actually, actually on day one, the garage was gonna be built first, and then the mixed-use project, because they were gonna use whatever preferred parcel be as the mixed-use site, uh, as their staging area to build the garage. Right, and then they thought it might be more economical not to do it that way, to do them both at the same time. Because, you know, maybe you're doing the foundations at the same time, you're, there're gonna be some cost efficiencies. And then they decided, no, actually, we'd be better off doing it one at a time, because still use staging, and this way we'll make sure that ESD pays everything. I don't know their specific problems, as we have, but they started raising those in the last month or two. That, well, sometimes ESD got difficult dealing with it. No, that's that, as long as we get the information, we're in control of parking garage, we'll get those funds, and when we have those funds, they're required to build the mixed-use project. But it actually started off with building the garage first, and then doing the mixed-use project, that's how it was set up in the beginning. But it actually started off with building the garage first, and then doing the mixed-use project, that's how it was set up in the beginning.
Other questions or comments? Let's move on. One nine dash eight six.
This is the guaranteed maximum price associated with building the garage, nine million eight hundred forty-four thousand five hundred dollars.
Questions or comments?
Is there any count, any change to this that's going to put it down over, we have to come back here?
Council's screening.
Chuck, does that nine point eight million, that's not including anything related to the grant, correct?
Well, the the grant doesn't cover any of this.
Right.
It's just maybe three point four hundred thousand. Does this include the, the grant would go up, be down, be associated with?
Of the nine point eight.
Yes.
Chuck, assuming this resolution gets passed, um, how long does it take the city to put the paperwork out for, can this price change in interim? I guess my question is.
If it does change, it has to come back here.
But these prices are based on everything that we did through the year.
Everything that we know, and I shouldn't say what Pike knows as of today, and what they have for placing on the used scrap, metals.
They were supposed to guarantee, you know, because the guaranteeing of those prices, that's why I rushed that through for the year. So I imagine the price is kind of crazy.
We're not saying anything at this point, but it's, oh, Ken and I are going to do that.
So Chuck.
I told them that this project doesn't move forward if they change price. We told that to say noon for a game.
Two questions. Number one, does this nine point eight million number, does that account for any potential variation in the short run on the cost of materials? Like, let's say, for example, you know, and I'm just making something up, um, the 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 price of, uh, I I don't know what weight mechanism or variable they use. If if the price of a a a a thing of steel goes up by fifty cents, is that buffered in here?
There is some type of buffer.
Gio, I can't tell you where it is.
They have some contingency built into this, what that number is.
Do we have a sense of time, how long does it come? Because if I'm hearing that this may not even start until next year, I I I'm assuming, I'm assuming.
No, no, we're talking about the mixed-use project, it says not to be.
No, I I understand that, I'm I'm talking about the garage itself.
Yeah, no, you never suggested the garage would start.
Okay, all right, just, I'm sorry, I wasn't trying to incite you, I just wanted to make sure, just wanted to make sure.
So say this gets passed Wednesday, is the garage going to start soon, or when is, when when is the plan to start the footings of the garage, or whatever?
The footings will be the first thing you see, you're not going to see the actual, build a little sometime or October.
Right.
That's going to take a while with the footings, and just like State Streets.
As soon as we get a contract signed, okay, they will come in and serve the foot. Actually, before they do the footings, they have to come in and, when we allow there, when when this thing was demolished, uh, ten feet down is nothing but garbage. They have to come in, pull out all the garbage, and put it in the roof though, or then they can serve the foundations from there.
And if they had concrete, like what has happened in other jobs with other people, and we have like slabs of three or four feet, it constantly through of concrete, are we going to have to pay more to have it removed, like we, and then they come back to us and say, oh, well, we're going to up the price now, because we have to put more time into this.
They, they, no, it's in that ground, um, they've done borers and stuff, they have very good understanding of what they have to do.
But again, that was the one that was causing it.
Right.
But you mentioned they did more.
And they need to figure out.
And it's required not to leave.
They did not find any problems environmentally except for the, the things that have been knocked down, just buried underground. They didn't find any of those.
Well, that's what's going to have to be.
Right, they have to take that part of the cost.
Chuck, maybe those, what type of garbage was down there, what was it, a dump site?
Most of the houses and buildings that were there.
Yep.
Just the remnants of what was left over.
And they knocked them down in sixty-two seventy, they should expose it to the weather, and a lot cheaper than it is to.
Good.
Do we have any contractual, does E S D have any contractual obligation to to provide us the grant money that we were awarded?
If we need to require E S D.
Yes, we're worried about it. It's in your budget, it's in your details.
So what experiences has Pike had where they have gotten their grant for or for E S D?
I don't know the exact case.
But if this garage starts moving forward, then by what you said earlier, then that would be E S D is releasing the funds, because that's what they're saying they want to hold out on.
And as soon as we get this thing up and going, okay.
Is that what E S D is, is this what E S D is waiting for in part?
No, they're waiting for a signed contract with us, basically.
And we need this to get the signed contract?
Yes.
Chuck, the city has correspondence from E S D stating they will be involved in this project, correct?
Yeah, we have a warrant.
Yeah.
You hear from Joe Roman, who's in thirty-four.
Yeah, he came, he came down, yeah, they were down.
He's all part of it, yes, but.
Oh, him specific, okay, okay.
Shemell County, Shemell County.
My last question is, um, what was the original thought guaranteed maximum price that was obviously below this nine point eight number?
There's nothing guaranteed, it was an estimated.
There there was nothing even estimated of what the cost.
The older bond.
I don't remember, I think it was around nine million, I thought it was less.
It was around.
Congrats, we hit bond.
You're going to say eight point nine or three point nine?
Eight point nine is the number that comes to mind, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
And then we were, we put some money in, we allocated some money, I remember, in the funds, so probably nine, three, nine, or four.
Right. Right.
So it's it's May now, why was, why was that end of twenty eighteen deadline so critical? Now we'll be back.
Because of tariffs.
Yeah, but now we got.
I mean.
There was an expectation that it would all be signed in January.
Better, then I had said through this, every single week for probably twenty hours, deals, it's, okay. We're we're more frustrated than we actually are.
Well, that's because you're dealing with it, right?
Because every day we think we get a deal, okay, something else pops up, okay? And what, everyone doesn't understand, it's not just your, the city, it's Pike, it's Pike's contract, it's up against E S D, it's leases, it's ground leases. I mean, M W B E stuff, how to get around all this, okay? You have thorough letter, there are requirements, I mean, it's some kind of stuff.
All right.
Sorry.
Are we moving on?
Any other questions on this?
If anybody has any questions, we now.
Oh, one more question, Mr. President?
Sure, council's screening.
So nineteen dash eighty-six, this R L, so proving the guaranteed maximum price for the parking garage, it says summary attached, where's the summary?
Who was that?
I told her I was going to get a summary, I didn't have it.
Get who?
Yes.
Oh, the car's office, will we be getting this summary?
Not right now.
They asked, would this summary entail?
I thought I was going to get a summary.
Oh, the breakdown of a cost, okay, I see, okay, sorry.
All right, on the one nine dash eight three.
Um, two thousand sixteen, the mayor helped to negotiate a local law through county that refunds municipalities through agent demolition programs. And, um, county pays for, among other things, three asbestos demolition screenings for residential properties purchased by municipalities from rural county. So in the past, rural county has paid contractors directly, this time around, they did it through reimbursement. So this is, uh, I'll give you the exact numbers here, but this is for, um.